And welcome to the April 10th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission actions will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give her his or her name for the record. If a citizen wishes to read any documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. There is a three-minute time limitation to public testimony to the commission. Aislinn, will you please call roll?
Crystal Chanda?
Here.
Whitney Fenwick?
Here.
Roger Fry?
Here.
David Guyer?
Here.
Rich Holm?
Present.
Eugene Bartow is excused. One Jamie Williams, Alex Chasteen.
Agenda item number two is approval of the minutes. The commission may wish to approve the minutes for the clarification and regular meetings from March 13th, 2024. Is there any discussion? Not, I would entertain a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second. I have a motion by Phillips and a second by Fenwick. Aislinn, will you call vote?
You said a motion by Phillips and a second by?
Fenwick.
Fenwick.
Phillips?
Yes.
Fenwick?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Guyer? Yes.
At this time, we will have moved to agenda item number three, which is a public hearing for a zone map amendment, File 24-481. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a zone map amendment, contract rezone application requested by Kobe Holly of Pocatello Quinn LLC, represented by Scott Lloyd of JHS Architects, to rezone a portion of building number 12 from industrial to commercial general. The site is located within the former naval ordinance plant, ordinance plant currently known as the Titan Center, addressed at 669 West Quinn Road. Very quickly, public hearing, hopefully I only have to explain this once tonight. The applicant is limited to a 10-minute presentation. There's a three-minute limit on public testimony. Those presenting or testifying will state their name for the record, while giving testimony questions and comments should be pertinent to the application and only addressed to the commission. During the public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go longer than eight o'clock, the commission will take a scheduled 10-minutes break, and you guys owe us treats. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in record and information presented during the public hearing. At this time, I declare the public hearing open, and I would invite the applicant to come forward.
I'm Scott Lloyd with the JHS Architects, representative of the Pocatello Quinn LLC. You kind of gave a pretty good description of what we're requesting. It's a contract, rezone contract amendment for a partial building rezoning of building 12 within the Titan Center area. The intent is that the use of the, that is currently zoned as industrial can be commercial zone, general, so that it can be used for, for, for a different type of function than what the current building is ultimately. It's kind of limited with industrial. We're not allowed to have certain, certain people within the, or certain occupants in the space, and so we're trying to just allow that to be a little bit more flexible to accommodate some potential leases that we're looking at. To the extent, that's, that's pretty much what we're looking for. Nothing other than that, so I guess that's what I have to offer.
Okay, thank you. My first question for you, driving by, we're not going to see any changes, right?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Commission, any other questions?
None.
No?
One quick question for you. It sounds like it may change kind of the folks that are entering and exiting that facility.
Yes.
In that, if we're looking at maybe families or individuals that are driving through the area, is there any consideration for how the area that is zoned industrial, is there going to be any?
Separation.
Separation for safety?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the west part of the, the building is the one that's kind of in question, and that will be divided from the east part of the building where you have two different occupants.
Okay.
And so those occupants will remain in place, but as, as it currently is and how we anticipate it for future use, a demising wall is separating the space that we're going to be developing for other purposes. And so there should be a very distinct and different kind of separation between the two zoning types.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I would like to invite staff.
Good evening, ma'am chair, commission members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As previously noted, Pocatello Quinn LLC has submitted a contract zoning map amendment application requesting to rezone a portion of building 12 from industrial to commercial general. The subject building is located in Titan Center, an industrial complex addressed at 669 West Quinn Road. A portion of said structure will include four indoor soccer fields. The use is classified as indoor entertainment, is outlined under Code Section 1701.160(c)(3). As such, the use is not permitted in industrial zoning, thus the request to rezone by contract of the building 12 to commercial general. Since the request is to only change a portion of building number 12 from industrial to commercial general, zoning through a contract agreement, a change in the comprehensive plan map designation is not required in this case. No scene was provided as required under Idaho statute. Staff has not received any written comment. Staff concludes that the application is compliant with all state and city code and recommends approval with the conditions as outlined in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. I think answering questions.
Commission, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will start hearing public testimony. Please remember when you come to the podium, state your name. Remember to only address the commission. You will only have three minutes. Keep questions pertinent to the application, and please don't duplicate questions or comments. And if you are going to speak, please sign in, and if, and remember this for the further down-the-road agenda item, let's just keep it going. If you want to speak, stand in line, sign in while this person's talking, and let's just keep it going. So at this time, I would invite anybody who would like to provide testimony in support of the application to come forward. Anyone opposed? Do you need to rebuttal that? That was pretty tough. No, okay. With no further public testimony, I will declare the public hearing closed. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
I'll move to recommend approval of the contract zone map amendment, application for Pocatello Quinn LLC, to rezone a portion of building number 12 within the Titan Center for industrial to commercial general. Find the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.170, the Pocatello City Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and to authorize the chair to sign the findings effect.
A second. We have a motion by Guyer and a second by Fenwick. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, at this time, we will move on to agenda item number four, which is a public hearing for preliminary plat, File 20, File 23-3221. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a preliminary plat application requested by Pocatello Hawthorne LLC. The engineer/surveyor listed is Carden Payne of Global Landworks, and the representative is Barry Bame of Connect Engineering to subdivide 13.99 acres, more or less, of land into 25 lots with a total of 91 multifamily units. The property is located in the 4300 block of Hawthorne Road. The subdivision is to be known as Mountain West Division Two. At this time, I declare the public hearing open, and I would like to invite the applicant to come forward.
Chairperson, could I have a moment? I should have taken this opportunity earlier but missed it. I need to disclose a close working relationship with the applicant. However, we're not involved in any way on this project, and so I don't see any conflict of interest. I've talked with Matt, our attorney, about that. He didn't either, so I just wanted to disclose that for public record.
Thank you.
Yep. My name's Carden Payne. I'm representing the Mountain West Division Number Two subdivision. I am the surveyor, obviously, for the project. So we are developing this, this property just north of Mountain West Division One. This is almost a spitting image of what's already been developed and built in Phase One, and we're just continuing that on up until the freeway there. And so this will be likely the final phase of this. Nothing really too crazy or interesting about this project. I did notice that a couple days ago, one of the public comments was with the land issue. We have been in touch with Mr. Hershey, who brought that up. I just got off the phone with him even just a couple hours ago, and we're working through that as we speak. We're gonna make it work for everybody's liking, and we'll just seek the city's council on the best avenue to get that corrected up to everyone's approval, in the most economical manner, if you will. So there shouldn't be any issues there. We'll get that addressed before final plat, so I would just ask that we could approve the preliminary plat with conditions of that getting adjusted and corrected, and we can go on to final plat.
Okay. I will tell you, and just so everybody knows, that Merrill Quell, engineer, Public Works Department, City of Pocatello, is not able to be here tonight. He did state that he doesn't have any problems with what's going on now, however, he would like you guys to contact him. He just does have a few questions and things to clarify, but where we're in the preliminary plat phase, it's, it's no concern. I don't know if it's a concern even beyond that. With that, commission, any questions for the applicant? Nope? Okay, thank you. Just a friendly reminder that right now would be a good time to silence your phones. Just so you know, my phone rang during the clarification meeting, so.
Again, good evening, ma'am chair, commission members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted, Pocatello Hawthorne LLC has submitted a preliminary plat application consisting of 25 lots with a total of 91 multifamily units with the, with the development to be known as Mountain West subdivision, Division Two. The subject property is located west of Home Depot and south and adjacent to I-86 and its own residential, commercial, professional. The development will be a similar product as the Division One. As such, municipal code requires a minimum lot size of 1442 square feet be maintained for each multifamily unit. There's a total of 17 fourplexes, four fiveplexes, and one triplex, for a total of 91 lots. All minimum lot sizes are being met. Primary access to the subdivision will be from Willow Drive via Hawthorne Road and extension of Sunny Brook Drive from Mountain West Division One. Willow Drive will be extended west to Jesse Clark subdivision to allow for interconnectivity with future, with future development. Two stormwater retention ponds are proposed specifically west of the O'Leary Canal associated with Lot Eight, Block One, and Lot One, Block Four. Regarding the O'Leary Canal, a portion of such will remain open and then buried beneath Fernwood Drive, continuing across Lot Six, Block Three, which is being set aside for open space. A letter has been submitted by David Ballinger on behalf of the Bureau of Indian Affairs for irrigation project regarding collaboration and coordination with the developer concerning relocation of the canal, and this is outlined in attachment to the staff report. Regarding infrastructure such as water and sewer, applicants engineer would need to contact Merrill Quell to go through details. No scene was provided as required under Idaho statute. Written correspondence was received regarding the past history of 49 feet of a property extending between 433 Hawthorne Road and Mountain West subdivision, Division One. Staff concludes that the application is compliant with all state and city code and recommends approval with the conditions as outlined in the staff report, and this concludes my presentation.
Commission, any questions for staff?
Do we see any concern for, you know, traffic traveling northbound, turning left into the project? Because that's right where the road starts to narrow, and there's no suicide lane.
No, they did. There was a traffic impact analysis. That was done with the original, but, well, with Division One, and I did put some of that in there. So that would have addressed that, and so there isn't a concern.
There's no concern there.
No, especially since Hawthorne has been approved compared to what it used to be.
Yeah, just know that's where the street narrows and the suicide lane kind of goes away, so.
Right.
So I just want to clarify, that traffic study covered both phases of this.
Yeah, so it was impact, it was a traffic impact.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward. Anyone uncommitted? Anyone opposed? Again, another tough rebuttal? No, okay. All right, with that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion to move to approve the preliminary plat application from Pocatello Hawthorne LLC for Mountain West Division Two subdivision. Finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and authorize the chair to sign the findings, facts, and decision.
Second. I have a motion by Fenwick and a second by Phillips. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Fenwick?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Guyer? Yes.
What you guys have all been waiting for. All right, agenda item number five, a public hearing for the new sign code. Time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public for a request by the City of Pocatello to repeal municipal code Title 15.20, sign code, as well as changes to the Title 17 zoning regulations. The public hearing was left open from the last meeting that we had, so it's already open. So at this time, I would like to invite staff to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name's Jennifer Flynn, and I'm the assistant planner in the planning department. First, I'd like to thank everybody that's here for attending. I think that public engagement is a really exciting process, and I'm excited that so many people care about signs and they're here to offer their opinion. The sign code is a product of over two years of effort to seek community feedback, listen to local business needs, research what other communities are doing, seek guidance from appointed and elected officials, and codify standards that fit with that input. It's a challenge to balance various interests. We have worked hard as a department and throughout the city to inform the public of what we are doing with the sign code rewrite. We're here to present the sign code rewrite and looking for your recommendation for approval. The sign code rewrite has been motivated by a desire to simplify code so it's easier to understand and interpret, respond to community feedback regarding signage, make city sign code friendly to business owners while also maintaining the beauty of our community, and respond to nationally recognized planning trends to prepare for future development. It's been impressive to hear how many community members care about signage and how signs impact their lives. If you don't mind, I'll provide a brief history of what we've gone through, you know, approximately over the last year and a half, just so everybody's on the same page. This recap takes place over about the last year and a half. In February of 2023, the planning department staff presented mayor, city council, and the public with survey results from a sign survey. Council showed interest in staff engaging in a sign code overhaul to reflect what business leaders, elected leaders, and residents of Pocatello want regarding sign standards within the city. Overall, findings showed that a majority of respondents dislike signage such as pole signs, billboards, and electronic message centers. Furthermore, temporary signage such as banners, sales, and yard signs did not receive good reviews. Respondents reported that wall signs, light pole banner signs, and monument signs are more desirable. Finally, a majority of respondents strongly agreed that they visit a business based on word-of-mouth, online platforms, and some other tools. However, while respondents agreed that signs play a role in their decision to visit a business, it was the only category where the community disagreed or strongly disagreed on how they choose to visit a business. If you'd like more information on the sign survey, refer to the city council work session February 9th of 2023. That's all posted online. In August of 23, planning staff presented a heavily amended sign code that sought to find balance between residential concerns, business needs, and everything in between. This effort was focused on balancing business rights to advertise with the desires and interests of the community. Furthermore, this effort focused on making regulations clearer to everybody, whether they be an experienced sign contractor or a member of the general public. In November of 23, planning took the amended sign code to the planning and zoning for a public hearing. During this meeting, we heard from a couple of community members and had a large turnout from the billboard community. Staff notes that meeting, meeting minutes are available upon request. P&amp;Z meeting minutes are also available and posted online. Based on the input provided by the commission and the public during the November 23 meeting, P&amp;Z meeting, planning staff decided the sign code needed to be simplified as well as addressing public concerns. This is what brings us to the revised draft that we have for you today. Over the last three and a half months, the planning department has worked to engage small businesses, citizens, city officials, and everyone in between. Planning staff formed a committee that met twice to review sign, city sign standards. This committee is made up of sign contractors, city planners, small business owners, a P&amp;Z commission member, Chamber of Commerce CEO, and concerned citizens. We met on two different occasions with billboard companies as well. I would like to address two topics in our sign code as they have motivated input throughout the community. Billboards and curfews on for illumination. Okay, first, we'll address billboards, or in the code, they're referenced as off-premise signs. At large, these are billboards. There are other examples of off-premise signs, but billboards for the most make up that, that category. After much consideration and conversations with residents, business owners, special interest groups, and elected officials, we decided to include a billboard cap in this code proposal. The community sees Pocatello as having an overabundance of billboards currently and do not want to see more in the cityscape in the future. Based on the city count, we have 73 billboards within city limits and another 20-plus just outside of city limits. A cap is not a ban. We are halting further development of billboards within city limits. We're not making billboards illegal. The billboards in place would remain permitted. Maintenance of the billboards would be allowed. Upgrades to billboards from static to electronic would not be permitted. Special interest groups will make comments indicating that this proposal is going to hurt local businesses and will impede business rights to advertise. In general, this proposal increases signage permitted for each business, especially for building-mounted signage. By placing a cap on billboards, it's been argued that we're reducing their value. Others will assert that a cap places market pressure on current billboards, and it will increase their value. It's important to remember that signage is one way to advertise your business. Aside from billboard advertising or outdoor advertising, businesses rely heavily on broadcast, online product placement, and print advertising. Businesses have a lot of options in raising awareness of their business. Word-of-mouth, registering, registering your company on Google Maps, and utilizing community organizations such as Chamber of Commerce, Rotary, or other civic organizations are ways to advertise. The second one I want to address is the illumination curfew. The proposed code outlines a curfew for internally and externally lit signs. The proposed, the proposed code states that all signs shall not be illuminated between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, or outside of the hours of operation, whichever is less restrictive. Off-premise signs shall observe the curfew hours of 11:00 to 7:00. The hours of this curfew coincide with nuisance hours listed in city code related to noise. These hours were selected just to have consistency within city code. Why do we think an illumination curfew is a good idea? To reduce light pollution for residents and wildlife, and to support a sign's purpose in indicating to consumers whether or not the business is open. Also, a majority of complaints that the planning department feels from the citizens relates to signs, the lighting of signs, and eventually these complaints get turned into code enforcement cases. This draft of code that you all have before you is more streamlined and easier to understand. It gives businesses more sign allowance than the current code does. I also want to mention that the planning department interacts with sign contractors throughout southeast Idaho and from other states on a weekly basis. With exception of billboard companies, most we have talked to have been in favor of this new code. In full transparency, some business owners would prefer zero regulation on signs or request more signage area than we are proposing. My example will show, I just have a couple of slides to kind of show you how the new code would work. It'll show you that additional square footage is permitted within our code. We have multiple businesses waiting to submit permit applications until the June 6th timeframe, which is the very fastest this could be in effect if things move forward, as we, as we hope it will. Also, in the packet, you should have a summary of significant changes made to the sign code rewrite, and I'll go through those now. So in, in Chapter 1520, sign code, there's a full repeal of current sign regulations, and we've integrated new sign standards into Title 17 zoning regulations. We've added and removed definitions regarding sign standards. There's a new chapter outlining sign standards, which is 1707. Content-based signs, signed descriptions have been removed to comply with Supreme Court rulings regarding content-neutral regulations. Signs that do not require a permit include face, sorry, sign face changes and murals. Prohibited signs include properties with no established use, off-premise, or billboard signs. Dimming required during curfew hours, as we've already mentioned, would be between 11:00 and 7:00, or outside the business of, hours of operation, whichever is. 11:00 and 7:00 or outside the business of hours of operation, whichever is least restrictive. Overall simplification of sign regulations and how to explain what is allowed. Sign code draft was essentially cut in half to reduce confusion. Painted wall signs and window signs do not require a licensed sign contractor to install but still require a sign permit. Licenses may be revoked by the planning director and building official rather than city council. This is similar to other licenses, and they would be able to appeal the revocation to council. The removal of abandoned or improvement of neglected signs are required. Temporary signs are now referred to as portable signs, and there is no proposed time limitation on these signs. There's the creation of a master sign plan for multi-tenant properties. Required for multi-tenant, develop new multi-tenant developments, and existing multi-tenant properties may utilize advantages of the master's sign plan such as a 10% increase in square footage of signage, and they may have multiple EMCs provided that they have the appropriate spacing of 150 feet. Building-mounted signs in the master sign plan get 15% or 20%, oh, I'm sorry, this isn't a part of the master sign plan. Just in general, building-mounted signs get either 15% or 20% allowance per elevation based on the zone that the building is located in. And sign exceptions are proposed to be removed. Rather, if an applicant or owner sees a hardship with code, they may go through the variance process. The notification that I have to offer is that notice was published in the Idaho State Journal on March 26th and again on April 2nd, both as display ad and legal notice as required in City Code Section 1702-300A3. Notice information was also provided to local television, radio, to include in their public announcements, and we've also included this on social media platforms. I thank you for your time and welcome any questions.
Can you confirm that the last public comment that we received was at 5:35 p.m. this evening? We've received all public comment that's come in?
I believe you have. Our team's been kind of keeping an eye on it. I haven't checked my email probably since 5:15 or so, but I think that you guys have everything.
You stated that for billboards, static signs would not be able to become electronic.
Correct.
Can you define electronic for us?
It's a good question. So, we have a definition of an electronic message center, and it says, "A sign or portion of a sign that can be electronically or mechanically changed by remote or automatic means." And, you know, I defer to any of my colleagues, but I believe that definition would apply to a billboard or a smaller sign.
I'm just envisioning the static signs that we see right now still have some kind of a spotlight that shines on them, so...
That's external lighting.
And that, okay, so that will still be allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's in place now, I think is the way that we work out.
What about dimming? We don't have a definition for dimming. What does that mean? It's not turning off?
So, good question on the externally lit. I believe we do have a definition for the electronic signs, and that is to a .1 lumen candle. But it's a good point on the externally lit, how low do light bulbs have to go to dim? So, that's something we'll have to consider.
I don't remember seeing a definition for dimming, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing it.
Sure.
So, if we could...
Let me take a look. So, I do see under part, yeah, I'm sorry, let me get the full citation here. 170740, and then in part E, and then, yeah, part D of E. "During curfew hours, EMCs shall be shut off or dimmed to .1 candle over ambient lighting conditions when measured over the appropriate distance or display a blank black screen." And honestly, we went with the dimming direction because in the last hearing, we heard from sign owners that shutting the sign on and off caused damage to their sign. I interacted with some more kind of corporate, you know, corporations that manage billboards, the manufacturing and distribution of those, and they did agree that it can injure the sign, so people have the option. Either they turn it all the way off, or they dim it really low.
Current signs that will become legal non-conforming, do they have to apply to this dimming? They have to do the dimming as well? There was a public comment, and now I've mixed up all my notes. Why I find this is, and somebody else have a question to please?
Yeah, I know, emailed you earlier and asked about banners being permanent signs. And the response I got was, it, what doesn't specifically say you can't use banners? But I got 17.07.040, I think A7, all signs should be made of a high-quality and durable material. Banners are not high-quality durable material, but I'm sure somebody will argue that. So, I think there needs to be some clarification there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, banners as permanent signs is tacky, looks cheap, and looks like a temporary business. Looks like a, you know, Halloween store.
Okay.
And then also, you knew you were going to get all this from me, so...
That's all right. I might have to call Jim up here.
Yeah, or Brett, one of the two. I see we're still allowing pole signs. I appreciate that you reduced the size and we eliminated pole signs in some of the zoning, but why are we still allowing pole signs when you read the part that says, "In a survey, dislike signs such as pole signs, billboards, and electronic message..." So, people already clearly said they don't like pole signs. The sign committee that was put together, every single person there said they didn't like pole signs.
Sure.
But yet, we're still allowing pole signs.
I, you know, Brett has a good answer for this, but from what I understand, there are appropriate times for pole signs where monument signs aren't going to work. And for example, a sign, the site triangle, you can't put a monument sign and have business visibility, you know, for people that are out on the street or pedestrians, and so that's why we felt like pole signs are appropriate. Would you add anything, Brett?
Not specifically. I think Jen covered it.
You state your name, please.
Brent McLean, planning director for the city of Pocatello. I think Jen answered it pretty well. There are circumstances where you can't put a monument sign, and to...
That's pretty rare, though, but...
Not necessarily. Especially if you look at some of our commercial districts...
Narrower lots you're talking about.
Narrower lots and where you have access points that restrict where those pole signs or where those monument signs can actually go. So, we need to allow for those for certain instances. I do recognize that it's not a preferred sign type, but it's not, I think it's something that we felt like we needed to allow.
Well, I mean, I think if you are going to allow pole signs, I mean, you could require a pole cover.
We could do that.
Which makes the sign look, you know, because then they paint the pole cover to match the building, you know, stone, whatever, it makes it look much nicer than just a pole sign.
And it's something that we could probably include.
And then you decided not to do any setbacks on this, this, you know, this...
Version.
Version, thank you.
Yes, so, again, same instance, there are some areas of town that the setback requirement might work, but there's also some areas of town where it wouldn't work. And so, if we're not, I didn't want to include complexity to this code.
Right.
And so, if we're going to create standards that make it difficult for certain areas to implement the sign code, that's where I kind of steered away from. Now, as we go forward and rewrite our zoning ordinance with form-based code, we could look at some of those instances in a form-based code to specify in a certain area that it might have separate restrictions. But for this type of code, that kind of complexity is some...
You saw too many issues would arise.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to determine where it would fit, where it wouldn't. You'd have to go through corridors and determine which corridors are appropriate, and I didn't want to go that route.
Okay, and then also on the building signage, I know 20% of the fascia, but we've eliminated any maximum width, any maximum height.
Yep.
So, we're fine with somebody running a sign from one end of the building all the way to the other, as long as it fits in 20%. From one end of the suite to the next end of the suite, and then other person next door does the same thing.
I get what you're saying. I've been doing this for over a decade. I have yet to see that happen. So, it could happen, but I'm not going to create code for every "it could." It just creates too much...
Well, yeah, that's why I've been, like, you've been doing it over a decade. I was in the sign business for 30 years. Pretty simple, the standard was, you know, 75% of the fascia. You know, that kept it. I mean, it's a problem, I mean, I'm sure most of the sign companies are probably here are great sign companies, but you have the sign companies like, oh, we'll just throw up the biggest, whitest thing. We don't care if it floats in the space properly. We don't care if it looks good.
Right.
If you're willing to pay for it, we'll do whatever you want, you know?
And I don't disagree with you, Adam, on that stance, but again, I'm just trying to look for simplicity in the code.
I know, I'm just trying to, we're looking for, to improve the appearance of the community too, and I, you know, we could run into a lot of...
And if that's something that the commission would like us to include, and if they can, any of these changes or things that you would like to see change, you can include as part of your motion.
Okay. Well, I definitely, you know, where you guys are coming from, and I know how much work you guys have put into this, I don't want to...
And so, if there's things that you would like to see happen with changes within the code that we're actually presenting to you now, you can include those changes in your motion.
I think that's actually all I have. So, that was pretty good. That wasn't too bad.
Whitney, any questions?
Not right now.
Okay.
If you guys don't mind, I will just show you. This won't take very long. You know, I was eager to learn how to implement this code. I've been working for the last six months or so on the current code, and I am still learning every day. It's hard to implement. So, I thought I would show you the way that current code allows for signage versus the proposed code. Okay, so, this is a plan that we have received in the Planning Department for commercial space, and under the current code, this building would be allocated 575 square feet for both building and ground signage. And if you needed me to, we can get into the details of how all of that comes about, but I've got the numbers up here, at least for the wall signs or the building signs, which is two times the frontage plus one times the open space, and that's how you come up with the 575. Under the proposed code, buildings would be allowed 1,207 square feet of signage on the west elevation for the building signage, and then 156 square feet for the ground sign. So, it's just a comparison of the sign square footage allotted per business under this new code. And I'll just state that both of these are in commercial general zones, and the sign allowance changes based on which zone you're in, and you can find those references in the table.
Will you go back one, please?
Sure. And so, literally all I did, you know, we have software that if you draw an outline around any of the buildings, you can get the square footage. And so, you know, what we need from sign contractors is a picture or a design, it kind of depends on what they have available to them, but in the absence of a design drawing, they can provide a picture with some scaling, you know, show us how large a window is so that we can scale off of that drawing, and then we're able to pull the area for that elevation. And again, each elevation is allowed a certain amount of signage based on the square footage of that area.
I'm good.
Okay. Same thing here, you know, different building, but similar idea. This is one in particular, they're a business in town that's been wanting a new sign. It's a huge building, and because they're considered or categorized as a professional office building, that means they have various tenants and multiple entrances. Our code only calls for a certain, so our code calls for, they get 32 square feet of directory and 64 square feet of ground sign. That's how much this entire building would get, and their problem is that it's just too small. Nobody can see because their building is huge compared to the signage. And we really want to balance, you know, businesses being able to advertise who they are and what they're doing, as well as making it pleasing.
Questions? Questions? I have a question for legal, please.
Thank you.
You state your name.
Matt Kerbs, legal counsel, city of Pocatello.
I have a question. If companies already have signs, and those are going to, they have done their permit, they legally have those signs, they are going to become legal non-conforming, which I now know sounds horrible, but it's not. But can, where they've been granted those signs under a different code, can we expect those same signs to follow the new codes? Is it legal for us to say, "Oh, yeah, we said you can, you don't have to turn it off before, but now you have to dim it"? Can we do that?
In all the research I've done, yes.
Okay.
When you're talking about regulatory taking and economic value is only one factor in the balancing test, and there's cases that, somebody said a 62.5% decrease in economic value, a court said this might be a taking, but that in and of itself doesn't come to a taking. And when we're talking about an ordinance that is talking about a time, place, and manner that's applied across the board, content neutral, to meet that significant government interest, I think we'll be fine. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I thought of one other question for you.
Sure.
Sorry. And now I forgot it. There is verbiage about signs that aren't taken care of or that are, who's going to enforce that? How is that going to be done, and at whose dime?
Enforcement's a big challenge for us, just to be honest. What we're working to do in this code is to put more onus on landlords, and we have to work out through the process as far as when tenants get signs, landlords sign something saying that they will remove abandoned signs when the tenant leaves and it's not being taken care of.
Okay, one more, one more, I'm going to keep us here till 8 o'clock.
I want to clarify that answer just a little bit, too. So, if that property is actively seeking a new tenant, and we recognize there's value in those cabinets and in those signs, we're not saying that you need to remove the sign if it's, if it's a building or a property that's actively trying to find a new tenant or whatever. Those signs can be there. All we're asking is for that sign to either have a blank put in, or be flipped, or something of that nature to indicate that that business is no longer there. And we're not asking for the property owners to remove those signs. What we're really concerned about are the properties where you have a sign that is in disrepair and it's not being maintained. Those are the ones that are what we're really trying to address, and, but not, we recognize that there are instances where a business leaves and that cabinet or that sign has monetary value. We're not looking for that to come off.
Yeah, and I was talking about signs in disrepair, so thanks for clarifying that. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to remind you guys, state your name when you come forward. Remember, you're only addressing the commission. You will only have three minutes, and I will stop you at three minutes. Only questions that are pertinent to the application. Make sure there's no applaud or anything from the audience, and let's not duplicate things. I promise you, we are doing our due diligence up here, keeping notes, keeping track. I promise you, we are doing our due diligence up here, keeping notes, keeping track, and all of that. So at this time, I would invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward.
I know the drill now. I came last time, and I waited too long.
You didn't, you haven't said your name yet.
No, I haven't, yes. My name's Thomas Klein.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot a step.
Yeah.
When you're done, you're going to sign your name at the top. The person standing behind you is going to sign their name on the second one right now. And then the third person's going to sign it, and then the- Then you better go first.
Well, she's a guest.
Oh, cross your name off. And rewrite it later. Okay. Restate your name again, please.
My name is Thomas Klein. I'll be writing my name shortly. I just want to say that I appreciate the work the commission does as a body of volunteers. I appreciate the work the city has done. And I think the consultation you've done has produced a very workable document. Personally, I would love to see fewer billboards. I was agog to learn that there were 70 of them. But this seems like a solution that should work for both the people that aren't particularly fond of signs, but also people who rely on them for their business. So that, I support the new code. Thank you.
You know the drill, you have your name on there, right? You're ready to say it.
I sure do. My name is Kestrel Hewlett, and I am also here in support of this. I think that simplifying the sign code is a really useful thing for us. And I also don't like billboards. I don't like being advertised to so incessantly, just all the time. And there have been many times, especially with lighted billboards at night, that I have been felt in danger on the road because they were so bright, because I could not see what was around me because they were so bright. I had to, like, block them. So I think that this is important. I think that Pocatello has an oversaturation of billboards at this point. I know that we have so many on the way from here to income that are just completely blank. We have so many billboards that there are not enough businesses wanting to advertise to take advantage of them. So it makes complete sense to me to put a cap on it and to say, we have enough. If you want to advertise, use the existing ones. And I wanted to publicly voice my support for this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leslie Melrose, and I wanted to address the commission today to speak in support of the proposed changes to our sign code. As a young person who was born and raised in Pocatello, I do think we live in a uniquely beautiful area. However, it is things like the obnoxious billboard problem that make me consider whether or not this is the community I want to start a family in or continue to contribute to economically. I feel that these new codes are fair to both businesses and consumers, and they help to position our local government in a place where it prevents businesses from assuming an antagonistic role towards the people they are advertising to. I think that what is being requested is very reasonable, and that it would go a long way to making Pocatello a community where young people would like to continue to live and build and make it just even more beautiful. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jackson, and I am in support of the new sign ordinance. I live in the college neighborhood, and I live a block away from a commercial area. And so I see the impact of signs every day. Some of the comments, I've written these, and I'm going to read them to stay on track.
Okay, I'll give you permission. If you could hand it to me when you're done, that'd be great.
It's okay. Messaging on electronic billboards is particularly distracting. This is ironic considering the public messaging I've seen on one of the billboards that not to text and drive. Billboards distract drivers' attention away from the roadway, especially lighted ones, which is intrusive and distracting to humans as well as animals. So please turn them down or off at night. Appreciate that. Big signage is not necessarily better. How often do you visit or buy something just because you saw an advertisement on a billboard? With the ability to have to search for businesses or services electronic, I think billboards and many other types of signage have outlived their usefulness. Pocatello, in my opinion, has an overabundance of signage. An example is a view from Edson Victor Nature Area in the evening. It's a much-loved and used nature area. I've put in many volunteer hours out there. The view of our surrounding mountains is beautiful from there, with the exception of the view of the multitude of lighted billboards along the I-15 corridor that are visible from there. Another example is Red Hill, a great area to hike, and I love to do photography, taking photos of our beautiful valley and the mountains surrounding. Now, looking south from Red Hill, we have a giant red maverick sign impeding the view. It is, I don't know what the height of that is, but it's really not nice. Our community is situated in a unique landscape that often we take for granted. Let's give our visitors a great first impression and our gate city and residents a break. Thank you very much.
Aislinn, do you want a copy of that?
Oh, yes.
Would you give that to Aislinn, please?
That was really passionate.
My name is Robert Richway, and what she said. Okay, so I'll try and be brief, which I won't be able to do. I really appreciate the effort that's gone through by so many people. I wasn't personally involved in this one, but I have, in the past, been involved. And I know it's not a very easy process. For that reason, I'd urge you to move forward with it without continuing to have it go on forever. I, I think the issue of aesthetics is important here. We, once a sign goes up, we seem to be looking at those for a long, long period of time. And we want to get that right. I think it's important to have some rules. I think these are a better set of rules than has been proposed in the past. Otherwise, we have a race to the bottom with the biggest, the brightest, and the most volatile sign going forward. One of my previous experiences is that one of the applicants had proposed something like Las Vegas signage, but I don't think we want that here. I'm glad we have a measurable methodology here. At least, once you agree upon something, you have an objective way of measuring it. So I think that's great. Regarding the rule or the issue of 24/7, I don't think we need 24/7. We have a great community. We don't need to pollute it with things going off all hours of the day and night. I think signs are very, can be very helpful. Most of the, most of the sign companies are very responsible people. I have dealt with them in the past, and they've done a great job. But I think we need to certainly make sure that everything works for everybody in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you say your name for me?
Robert Richway.
Bob Ward, Wendy. I actually went to the eye doctor about a year and a half ago, before any of this come up. And I told him, I have 2020 vision, and I told him I was having trouble with the lighting, like down Yellowstone especially. And I was kind of confused, and I thought maybe he could do something to help me. And he said he had had this come to him a lot, from different people in the area. And so I just wanted to come to the council and let them know what she said, so that I could shorten up the time here, that I'm born and raised here in Pocatello and been here my whole life, and I'm particularly against much of the signage at all. But these bright LEDs are killing me. So thank you for anything you could do to take that into consideration. I won't bore you too much longer, but I just wanted to make my, about my eyesight. And I keep thinking, man, if a guy's to get in an automobile accident or something, what do you say? When you, I mean, it's really confusing when they allow the sign, people who design them and put them out and be extra bright and make movements. And it's a tough thing. And so when you guys get a little older, like I am, you might appreciate that. And I appreciate your time and your thoughts on this, whatever you can do to, I'd rather not have too many of them at all, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commission. My name is Christopher Williams. I've been a resident in Pocatello for 23 years. I do support the code change, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. I know I haven't seen the entire sausage-making procedure, but just getting a glimpse at it, I realized things are never as simple as they seem. So appreciate the work that went into that and the thoughtfulness that went along with that. I'm just going to speak about my feelings. In my opinion, Pocatello's greatest asset, besides possibly its people, is its natural beauty. On a nearly daily basis, I think about how much I love the mountains and hills that frame this valley. And I know that most people that live here consider our access to nature one of the benefits of living here. And being able to see and feel connected to that is important as well. Billboards and large signs are, in at least my opinion, a blight and take away from the day-to-day experiences of anyone living in or visiting our city. In a world that is so dominated by digital advertising, I feel like the value of natural beauty for all people is greater than another mode of advertising for businesses and the potential revenue for advertising companies. Thanks for your time, appreciate you.
My name is David Hutchinson, and I guess I'm in support of it. I'm glad you guys are visiting this again. I've been here a few times on this particular agenda, city council stuff. And, you know, I think Idaho Falls was mentioned earlier, maybe it was in the earlier review or whatever, but, and I lived in Idaho Falls for a few years, but Pocatello's really super unique. And a lot of the real estate or the homeowners and stuff are on the benches around here, and the city's in the valley. So as far as a lot of the billboards and all that, I'm not that concerned about that myself. I don't like it a lot, but I understand they need to advertise. It's more the illuminated ones that, you know, the audience for those, I don't know, 500 feet, I don't know how far it is, from one red light to the other, whatever. But I can see it five miles away where I live. And I can see the other sign that's three miles away, and I can see the other sign that's, and, you know, the intended audience, they can't read, I can't read it that far away. So the intended audience is closer than that. So I think, you know, dimming the lights is going to help a lot. I'm all for that, and I guess I'm in support of it. And just the uniqueness of our valley is the main thing I want to bring out, because I don't want to say the same thing that everybody else has said. I just want, to me, you know, our valley, our vision, or something like that we used to say, the important valley vision or whatever. So just keep that in mind, that it's a unique situation here. It's not flat where if there's a light, a sign, you know, you don't see it when you're two blocks away. Here, you see it when you're five miles away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Fairbank. I know I don't look it today, but I am an attorney. I'm here representing my company, my law firm. We just constructed a new building in the North Gate area. And I'm here to support the new sign code, because we'll be able to construct a better sign for our building under the new code and under those regulations. I don't have any stance one way or the other on the billboard issue or the lighting issue. But the new code, as far as signs affixed to the building, would be advantageous to us and help us to better advertise our business and explain to passersby what's that building. So, thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Last call. Okay, I'm just going to challenge you guys. These guys in favor were on the ball, they kept it going, just saying. Okay. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony uncommitted to the application to come forward.
So now I sign?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. So, and I'm going to be reading if that's-
Your name?
Diana Scal. And I'm going to be reading from my notes.
And if you will just give that to Aislinn when you're done, that would be great.
And I also have a visual aid, also known as a sign.
Did you get a permit for it?
That was pretty good. So I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak today and to share my appreciation for all that everyone does to support this community, which has been my home for 25 years. I wrote down what I want to say, because I don't want to forget anything. Regarding the sign issue, I first want to start with a quote that I heard last night from Emily Gilmore. And if you don't know the Gilmore Girls TV show, you should watch it. And it goes like this. "Garrish, why have a single sign if it can be in bright flashing neon?" Which leads me to this view out my kitchen window, which is not neon, but it's much-
Will you address the commission, please?
It's much, much worse. "I am saddened and disturbed by this view. What was once a peaceful vista is now no longer. My lovely view of the mountains by day is interfered with by this new billboard. It went up without me knowing it was going up. And as you can see from the photos, and this particular one was taken in the dark, my morning coffee comes with a view of the billboard's light, which in my estimate, based estimation, has the intensity of about $1,000." So I don't want this for you, and I don't want it for me. So I emphatically request a ban on any new billboards, and also that existing billboards are turned off completely at night. So why, it's damaging my property value, and I'm not alone. So if it's going to damage my property value, and you don't have a view like this, you may have one in the near future, and it will damage your property value. And why I'm uncommitted to the new code is because I understand that the city denied the request for this particular billboard. They actually denied it. Guess what? It's still here. The billboard still went up. And as I understand it, the billboard was appealed. But how can that be? Because the city in good faith tried to honor its citizens. Yes, a sign company with money, time, and capacity to take this to court did it, without giving the citizens a chance to appeal the appeal. And it's there, and I have to look at it every day, and I have to call and complain about it. And the tragedy about that is, nobody can find a truck to actually measure how bright the billboard is. So what good is this code doing for me? It's not doing me any good. So I'm not committed, because I don't think enough is being done. So I request that this particular billboard be removed in its entirety, and that a more public and transparent process for appeals be instated.
Time. Time, thank you. Did you get signed in, sir?
I did, I did.
Thank you very much.
My name is Theron Pollard. I have been a resident of Pocatello since 1958, and I've operated TP Advertising Company, which is a sign. We make a lot of signs for people, especially at political time. My son, David, now runs that business. But I opened Westwood Discount in 1989, and at that time, we've been running Westwood Discount now for 35 years. Something I heard in the proposal tonight, that they were saying that window signs need to be approved by the city, have to have application to make a window sign, which I think is kind of ridiculous. I know that I had a sign on my Westwood II building back on 2012. It was a very well-made, professional sign put on the building. And I was told to remove the sign, because they considered it a temporary sign, and I had to take the sign down. And I don't think that was right, that I should have to take the sign down, because it was mounted properly on the building, announcing my store. So I don't think that those kind of, if your sign is on the building in a professional way, in a professional sign, I don't know why it should, you know, fall under a temporary sign status. So I'm, I want, I hope that the public will be able to see the new sign ordinance before it goes into effect, have an opportunity to read it, and voice any disapproval they might have. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anyone else uncommitted? All right. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony opposing the application to come forward. If you want to, the next person wants to sign in, that'd be great. If you want to, the next person wants to sign in, that'd be great.
Chair and members of the commission, my name is Matt Hunter. I'm the president and CEO of the Pocatello Chubbick Chamber of Commerce. I did serve on the committee that, interim between your last meeting and this one, looked at this. We did talk about a lot of things. I did disagree with some of them. I do like some of the things, that they are trying to make the code easier to understand. But I, I think it was flawed at the beginning. They sent out a survey that only was accessed by a limited number of people. I would have been happy to send that survey out to the business community. Didn't know it had gone out. Would have forwarded if I'd known, and I think we probably would have had a lot different result than you are looking at from what you, what you've been told today. I'm not going to speak really too much on the sign issue. I'm going to speak about business and the suffering that it has gone through. You know, during the COVID breakout, we taught our community how to shop on Amazon. We taught the world how to shop on Amazon. That has damaged business in the Pocatello community and all over the country. I believe that anything that really restricts the business to have the right to use whatever type of sign advertising, they need to support their business to get the word out to the community about what they do and how they do it, should be allowed to exist. I know, I just want to point out, I think you got them all, but I, I've received a lot of letters from businesses that were also copied to you about the issue, so hopefully you've all, you've seen those and, and are listening to them, because they're just folks that couldn't be here and would like to have been. But businesses are struggling, especially small businesses. And I just think this makes their life more difficult, not better, not easier. And I would really like you to reconsider whether this code ordinance should go into place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you guys passing around that sign-in sheet to stand in line, because we're going to get out of order and Aislinn's not going to get it right. So if you could stand in line in the order that you've signed it, and then the person last in line, just hang on to it and give it to the person behind you. If there's no one behind you, just leave it on the seat when it's your turn, please.
Hello, I'm Bruce Murdock. I'm a small business owner here in town. A very small business owner. I'm the only one there. Dimming the signs, old signs don't have that ability very well. Yes, I have a little LED reader board on the bottom of my pole sign that she, now you want to cover. Who's going to cover the cost of that cover and maintain it? The pole's painted, it looks good. Yeah, rusty pole, that don't look good. Putting a tin cover on the thing that's going to get damaged and you have to paint, let's just paint the pole, make it easier. Dimming, we can't shut them off that well, like they've said. Yes, you can try to dim them. My LED reader board, it's just one-line reader board, I have to call the sign company, whoever I can get ahold of, if I have to reprogram it, because it's old. Are we going to ask them to dim the neon lights on Old Town, that we spent, that everyone had to spend so much money? The chief theater sign, is it going to be, there's no chief theater. Is that going to be shut off? Yes, we ought to put in a maximum brightness on the LED, not, some of them are too bright, I'll agree with that. Let's put a maximum brightness on them, rather than, oh, let's cover everything, let's make all the old ones. Let's dim the brightness, rather than try to make everybody else follow these other rules. I'm grandfathered in on a lot of things. I have to have a sign. I'm a destination business. I don't attract customers going down the road. They need to know where I'm at after they've called. They know they need to come to me. They need to be able to find me. So I need a sign out. I maintain it. It is not too bright. The LED also gives the date and time for the people driving. But that is why I think we need to tweak this ordinance this way. Yes, we do need to update, but let's do some tweaking. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael Wheelock, Premier Properties Broker in commercial real estate realm. First of all, thank you for your time and appreciate the opportunity to voice our opinion. And I think the group I represent really is more concerned specifically with the abandonment language, and it was appreciated, you know, just addressing that in the capacity of, commercial real estate might take upwards of more than a six-month period to sell a building. Sometimes it's a year, sometimes it's longer. And just kind of the irony that the business is now, or building is now vacant, to come up with funds, to tear down a sign, to try and promote a potential buyer that now the building doesn't have a sign, or, or you can go get a permit and maybe you can erect another sign. It just does add layers of complication with the request to essentially eliminate all abandonment languages, the full request. And I also think I would want to point out the irony involved with, you once had a sign to help promote the sale of the building and an asset that someone might desire. You abandoned that on a building that was already difficult to sell in the first place. It just promotes more difficulty for that capacity. No one wants to see a vacant building. That's what we strive to do, and then get other activity and then life in these. So I do appreciate your time, but I really am urging you to consider just completely eliminating any language on abandoning signage, just because a building is vacant. Thank you for your time.
You guys, Frank Newding, can I drop, give this to you guys?
Sure.
So that's, I'm sorry.
We'll get her.
Well, I'll give her mine.
Okay. So, but that, that's just a, a copy of what PRT does in Pocatello, as far as rolling billboard advertising on their buses. You can see they charge a lot of money for it. We're going to continue to update and upgrade buses. So as far as banning billboards, are we going to ban that as well? Because they actually fall in the same category. That's, that's number one. Number two, I'm a Realtor as well. As far as the abandonment issue, you know, if you remember, Pocatello had a sign cabinet out here like three years ago, and we didn't have a sign in it for five. So would, would we have taken the cabinet down? Probably not. As far as billboards themselves, I mean, it's, I mean, how many Mexican restaurants can we have? Or how many Italian restaurants? I mean, if you, or car washes, if we're going to cap businesses, are we just picking on one? Are we picking on two? So what makes a decision to take a viable business and put it out of business by saying, hey, we can only have this? So in my case, with this young lady, with this billboard, that's the one I put up. I'm working with Jennifer at the city to try and alleviate her issue with the brightness. And she and I have been in contact. So we're working on that. So just for you, we're working on that, so you know. Okay? So other than that, I just think this whole code is a little bit too broad and bad for business. And I think that the business community has spoken through the petition that was circulated by the YESCO people. And we had a survey of 400 people that replied to our sign survey, but we have 350 people that said, hey, this petition was directed at this code being bad for business. Thank you.
Commissioner Michael Malcolm with YESCO. And I just have a couple of things. I'm in opposition of the sign code in that you're getting close. We're just not quite there yet. There's some, some clear things that need to be addressed. I think first and foremost, the curfew to be implemented upon signs. I know that you had brought legal up here to kind of ask that question, is a sign that's been permitted and allowed to, to operate under certain circumstances, and then to come back and remove those, that will cause some problems. And I think we need to reconsider the curfew and the purpose behind that. And I think that should be something that, if you choose to move forward with this sign code, that you make a, you make a condition that you remove the curfew portion of that code. Secondly, I'm in opposition of, you know, banning the billboards. And they talk about, well, this is just a cap. And I, and I can understand the cap portion. We need to make sure we have clear understanding of what maintenance is on those signs, and maybe some definitions as to what a maintenance would allow for. If a sign were to be capped but still maintained, if we needed to maintain the structure of the steel base or the, the steel structure support, could that be maintained in a way of replacing old I-beam-type steel with a new monopole steel support? We feel like that would be beneficial to, to also improve the aesthetics of the sign. We want our signs to look good. I, I appreciate the input from the, the citizens. I too am a resident here of Pocatello, have been here for over 20 years. I love the beauty that Pocatello has to offer. I live in the mountains. In no way would we ever want to put a billboard in a beautiful area that, that's surrounded by mountains. If you look at the zoning and, and where billboards are currently permitted, they're going into commercial areas. They're going into industrial areas where commerce takes place. This is a, a community where business takes place, and appreciate Matt Hunter's input, because in the city where business takes place, you guys have your vision, and I just kind of wanted to, to quote something here, is it says, "One of the visions within the economical, robust area of your vision for Pocatello, market Pocatello as a destination by promoting activities and amenities such as downtown, Idaho State University, and outdoor recreation." We feel that our resources with these billboards achieves that vision that you guys have put in promoting activities. Idaho State University is up on our billboards.
Thanks, Michael.
Good evening. My name is Rob Kirkham, and I would like to echo the gratitude that's been expressed for your time and for the city's time and the, all the effort on both sides of this. I want to echo some of the sentiments of those who supported this, in that I agree that we live in a uniquely beautiful area. I went to college out of Pocatello, moved abroad, never thought I'd come back to Pocatello and live here. But interestingly enough, through circumstances, I came back and I, I worked with my family business. We're a real estate development company. We do own some billboards. And it's the, it was the business-friendly nature of Pocatello that brought me back, and it gave me an excellent place to raise my family. I'm, I'm fortunate to live on one of the banks that was described earlier, and I, I look down, and I can see the city of Pocatello, and I can see the lights. I look up, and I can see Chinese Peak, I can see Scout Mountain. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. I think those two things absolutely can coexist. I'd like to also speak on the abandonment issue. In October, I took a tour with the Chamber of Commerce of Historic Downtown Pocatello, and the guide made note or brought attention to several ghost signs that they thought brought a particular aesthetic value and historical significance to our community. And I couldn't agree more. What I find is a little disturbing about the discussion tonight is the attempt to codify aesthetics. What I see in this is not an aesthetic judgment, but a judgment on uniformity. Aesthetic is an individual perception, and we're making this decision, oh, the, the people have spoken. They don't like pole signs. They don't like billboards. They're ugly. They, they're not good. This is a sample size of 400 people. I looked at those abandoned signs, or ghost signs, historic downtown signs, and I think, why are they beautiful to us now? Were they beautiful back then? Or were they just commercial speech that should have been regulated, should have been denied, should have been painted over? Should they be painted over now? Should the Peterson mural on the side of the purpose building be painted over, et cetera? These are just questions I'd like to raise to you as you ponder this issue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kent Marbo with Lamar Advertising, 420 Elsow in Pocatello. And here I am again, and I'm going to read some notes that I've read before, so thank you for your time.
When you're done with those, can Aislinn have them, please?
Okay. "We are opposed, as you know, of the proposed sign code amendment to ban all premise advertised, off-premise advertising signs or billboards as a proposed curfew requirement of off-premises signs between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. We do not see the need for these proposed changes and feel that the responses of almost 400 people to a city survey does not rise to the level of public outcry necessary for these changes. The responses from less than 1%, let me repeat, that 1% of the city's population is not enough to take action when you think about the financial impact this will have on local business in our community. Even though we do not see the need for it, we can agree to the proposed ban of any new off-premise signs within the city limits. We see the current sign code as it pertains to off-premise signs as a very restrictive and very effective way to control new off-premise signage in the city. As evidence to the current sign code's effectiveness, we haven't applied for a new off-premise sign permit from the city of Pocatello in seven years, and the fact that only two sign permits for off-premise signs have been granted by the city in the past two years shows that the proposed change to the sign code is, to ban off-premise signs is overreaching. We have, we have suggested a cap and replace for off-premise sign ordinance that can be regulated and tracked by issuing demolition permits for existing signs to be relocated within the city limits. Other municipalities in Idaho have already witnessed the effects of a cap and replace off-premise sign code and the success it has by reducing the total number of billboard signs within their cities. We are very much opposed to the proposed, proposed changes to sign lighting or illumination of the off-premise digital EMC signs and the curfew requirement on all off-premise signs. If the city passes this proposed change on lighting, illumination, and the curfew as is, we will be forced to challenge any enforcement of those changes on our previous permitted grandfathered signs currently in existence in court, and will, and we will seek attorney fee, court fees, costs, damages brought on by any enforcement. We would just like to ask, where is the evidence that these proposed changes are necessary and in response to a threat to the public health and safety of our community? I haven't seen anything or heard of any proof provided by staff, which I believe is required by law, for these drastic changes to be imposed on our, what now would be considered legal non-conforming signs. How can these proposed changes on illumination, if adopted, be retroactively enforced on legal non-conforming signs? And can staff or the city attorney provide any answers to us? Thank you."
Thank you.
Good evening. Rick Magnuson, MSVM Group, longtime advertising agency. Thank you for your time tonight. I had the opportunity at the very first commission meeting to make a presentation to you all. We've submitted our white paper, so I'm, I'm here again on behalf of my role as vice chairman of the Idaho Advertising Federation and a board member of the Pocatello Advertising Federation, just to reiterate our opposition to the ordinance as drafted now. Certainly want to applaud the commission in taking the additional time that you all have, having the work-study sessions. There are some things that have been improved as part of that process, and we applaud that. However, there's quite frankly too many, as you've heard tonight, and we agree with our colleagues, that still, in our opinion, are overly restrictive and anti-business. You've heard mention of several of those this evening. One angle that I want to take from our advertising standpoint is, we work closely and have handled the marketing for banning development for many years, going back to Ray Burstead and Ginny Gilliam and Almia Kate and several. It's so difficult and challenging, and I understand there's a balance, but it's so difficult and challenging to market a community and all the things that we're up against in trying to get businesses to relocate, to expand, and to all the in trying to get businesses to relocate, to expand, and to all the things that we want to create jobs and opportunities here. Anything that can be overly restrictive or deemed as anti-business is just one more thing that we have to deal with and address and makes our job as marketers that much harder. So again, I don't want to go over plowed ground. Plenty of stuff in the white paper you've all seen from me and the Idaho Ad Fed, as well as all the comments tonight. We just wanted to go on record in opposition to the ordinance as it's drafted now. So thank you for your time.
Hey, good evening. My name is Nathan Young. I represent Yes Go Outdoor Media. We're a 104-year-old family business. Signs are us. It's our life. And we care deeply about what we do and we care deeply about the people that we serve. And this code is making progress. But specifically, we are opposed of the two main issues on the billboard side that need to be addressed. The first is the cap system. It's, it's not a fair compromise. We want compromise. We want win-win. We want to work with the city. But to cap the system and have no definitions of maintenance of what can happen to the investments that we've put into the ground, to our advertisers that are trying to come and preach business to the city of Pocatello, there needs to be a clear definition of those existing billboards that exist in the city of Pocatello. What happens if the road expands? What happens if a lease is lost? That needs to be defined, and it needs to be a fair compromise. The second issue that we oppose is the illumination. The illumination is absurd. A dark city is a city not open for business. And we need to be able to promote what's going on here. Growth is pivotal for all of our cities. And again, as an organization that's been doing this for 104 years, we are here to help. We want compromise. We want win-win. And in order to do this, we have to work together. And these two main issues need to be addressed before this code proceeds to the next step. And we urge the, the lighting issue to be completely stricken off and move forward. And as previous mentioned, as an industry, this is, this, this will create waves and a fight and a challenge ahead. And so thank you for your time. We appreciate the energy efforts of these two and the energy effort they've done and happy to help. Thank you.
Deloitte Stewart. I don't think, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, but I really don't think it's good for business. And, and that's the thing that I think is important, that we really look at what is going to attract business to this town and what's going to keep the ones that we have here now. I feel like a survey is an interesting thing. I'd read some of the survey, and I think it's the, the way questions are asked, you can get about any answer. If you would have put on there, "Do you like dumpsters and should we have them? And do you like to look at them?" Everybody would say no, but we need dumpsters. And I think that there's just some people that don't like the, the signs. I personally, and I have no interest at all, no, no financial interest in the billboards. I like billboards. I like seeing a town that looks like it's alive and well and that there's businesses. I, I think there, you can still see the beautiful things we have. I think when you're driving from the south into town on I-15, I, you know, yeah, you cover up a few of the junkyards and a few of the states, you know, a gravel pile and that. But you see, I, in my opinion, beautiful billboards that my wife would have never known that Donny Osmond was coming if it wouldn't have been for a billboard. So they're, they're very informative, and I think that we use that for, you know, these billboard companies donate a lot of space to great things like battered women, casa, foster care there. I mean, I could go on and on with all of the, the great things that they promote on their, on their billboards. We, we saw a lot of that about COVID, when COVID was around. I've been in the print business, and print is dying. Radio is tough. TV is tough. And it seems like the thing that's really taken off right now is billboards and especially digital billboards. And we're kind of shutting that down. But the main reason why I'm here tonight is I just want to make sure that there's a well-defined, defined, because for years, an off-premise sign was somebody like these company, or these charities that I represent, like Spenderella, the Ski Swap, Light the World, the Parade of Homes Just Serve. We, we do put very nice-looking signs around town, and those were always called off-premise. You guys are kind of changing the definition. I believe they're going to be a temporary, and those are still going to be allowed. And so I just want to make sure that we have well-defined, because I don't want a different employee of the city to say, oh, that's off-premise and it's not allowed. So I would just ask that you really look at that. I think as far as the billboards, some of them are bright, but a polar bear with its baby in the winter is going to be bright. So, thank you.
Mike Seibert, local business owner. Been residing here since 1946. And one thing I wanted to bring about is in order to, business to stay cost-effective in every aspect, they're all going digital. And that includes your money and your, and signage. Within five years, you won't have physical money. You'll be all digital. And existing signs, all the signs run up and down, but internally, they'll, they'll eventually be going from certain types of signs to the new technologies in order to maintain cost-effective business operations. And one thing we're talking, is talking about Yellowstone. If you have a, lights out on the signs on Yellowstone at 11 o'clock, it'll be pitch black. You can't even see where you're going. The city doesn't even have streetlights. They're using the signage of the businesses to light the street. So if you're going to have that, you need to do something, have to go get the light, streetlights hooked up, turned on, get them bright enough so you can see. Another thing is in, you're talking about developing a master plan for a development, and you're basing a lot of your figures on building size frontages. When you're doing your master plan, you just got ground, you got roads, and you got lots. You don't know what the building sizes are going to be. You can, so how do you determine? You can determine some locations for maybe some monument poles or something for your entries to identify businesses, but you can't go beyond that. And, because you don't know how big the buildings are going to be on lots. It's a commercial development, and that comes later. So somehow, we need to fix that. Another thing I'd like to bring up, crime is directly or inversely proportional to lighting. Whenever you have ample lighting around, you have very little crime. When it's dark, there's a lot more crime. And the whole, I see that just from my house. I keep it well-lit. All the crime and all the car break-ins are across the street where it's dark. And, and then I noticed in your ordinance, you had the site triangle thing on there. The city don't follow the site triangle at all. They go to all their intersections, put in their traffic control sign boxes that are four foot wide, five foot tall, right next to the intersection, maybe two of them, and you can't even see around the corner. So if they're going to have a site triangle, they ought to follow the rules. The last one would be probably the old Benton and Fifth there. That's state, put that in. Last one the city done was like the one they call on, the light over on Pine. There's control locks that big right next to the corner.
Thank you very much. Really quickly, we're past 8:00. Commission, do you need a break? Continue on? Keep going? What are we feeling?
You're good.
Okay, I'm good, also good. Okay. I do want to remind you guys, I, I've heard maybe the last three or four people and you guys and you guys and you guys, we are volunteers. It is not us. We are here to help the public. So please remember that when you're talking to us. Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. My name's David Whitehead. I'm from Idaho Falls. I'm actually a triple stakeholder in this issue as a homeowner. I don't want a, a sign right outside my window, but I live in a residential zone, and that's why I don't have a sign outside my window. I also am a business owner that has to have signs. Signs are vital to our success. That business that I own is a sign company. So we work with business owners every day, and we know what the effects of effective signage is to a success of a business. Part of this sign code I'm very positive about, the multi-tenant building sign change, we're very for that. The attorney that spoke for it, we're, we're building their sign if it gets approved. It's a multi-tenant building that's being restricted to one sign, which makes no sense because you've got this tenant that has to be on this other tenant's side of the building. So it doesn't make any sense. We're, we really like that part of it. We also like the increased square footage. Some of the restrictions on the lighting and on the height limits and on the pole signs, we're really against. The SBA contends that the most effective signs or on-premise advertising is the most effective and also the most economical form of advertising for a business. On your own website, you have a picture of the chief theater sign right on the front page. There wouldn't be any more of those if you banned that height limit, or you made that height limit. Also with banners, an LED display allows the business to have multiple ads on there so you don't have to have a now-hiring banner here and a special banner here. So actually, LED displays reduce banners. Lighting promotes safety and prevents crime. One side of our building doesn't have a sign, and that's where our trucks get hit when people steal our catalytic converters because it's dark. Our other signs light up the, the property really well. Also, when people say that pole signs are distracting, if you took those away, how much more distracting is it looking at your phone for an address while you're driving or looking at the building that's back, on the back of a parking lot, as opposed to looking at a sign that's out here? Let's see, economic impact, you're going to lower the sales of businesses, it's going to lead to a higher unemployment, less tax revenue. We've had clients not expand into cities because of the strict sign ordinances. And then if you're also going to really just allow tempor, or temporary signs, does that include campaign signs? And maybe you guys should think about that because some of the worst offenders are politicians.
And again, there was the "you guys." We're not politicians up here.
All right. I'm BJ Fillingame, representing Lookout Credit Union. I appreciate your efforts and the uniformity and all that goes with that. I wish our branches had a little bit more uniformity, so I'm, I'm with you. Lookout Crediting is a huge proponent of billboards. We're on Oak and Yellowstone. We're on the static billboard over there at Ridley's off Pocatello Creek. So we've done the digital, you know, the vinyl wrap. And we're also on the billboard off of Pocatello Creek, the new one that Mr. Newting has graciously put up. So I think a lot of the comments in opposition are subjective. I think we live in a world where we're on Facebook and Google and we get peppered with ads. So for someone to say that a billboard doesn't, isn't attractive, that's fine. But an example last week is we had a seven-figure deposit come in. Someone come out of a business trip at midnight and saw one of our rates. And they came in and said, yeah, is this the real thing? Yeah, it is. So we did it. And that creates commerce, right? That gives us an opportunity to do things like Lookout Point or the Pocatello High School Field or the mayor's reading program and things we do for the city. So those things are important to us. Also, the other concern I have is turning them on and off. I know there were some comments about that, but what, what's one luminant? Like, I didn't see an example tonight, like, what is the impact? Is that, like, dark? Is that kind of dark? Is that? So the curfew thing is definitely concerning to us because to us, 20, we're paying for 24/7 commerce on that aspect. But the condensation, we've got Idaho weather here, that condensation on those commercial boards is, is drastic to those. It kills the life of those. So I mean, who's going to pay for that when those things happen? We have a monument, 202 Alameda at our branch there, and those are concerning to us. So again, we're in opposition, but we appreciate you listening to our concerns.
Ryan Christensen. I'm also representing Lookout Credit Union. I am their facilities manager. But before that, in continuing now, I have been involved in the property management at the Omni Business Center for 19 years. And I'm, I'm going to keep it brief because I think I'm the last one and everybody's ready to go. Specifically against the curfew, I have seen a direct proportion between the crime, different traffic, things like that that happen on my properties based on the lighting level that I have. And I think that even the billboards, as we drive around town, Oak and Yellowstone, the one that's a block to the north of our building, that lends to the security of all the areas. And somebody else before said, if you drive down Yellowstone and all the signs are turned down, the city of Pocatello does not have the streetlights. So I, I think the curfew specifically is going to guarantee a little bit more police engagement with our citizenry, unfortunately. Dark equals nefarious most of the time. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Lau, Carver Jacks Old Town. I'd like to say thank you to you guys. I've been appointed, I've also been elected, and both of them stink most of the time. So thank you, really, really thank you for putting in the effort on behalf of us. And the same for staff. Thank you. It's kind of a thankless job. You get people coming at you from both directions. So a couple of things that haven't been said tonight or that I'd like to expand on. Today, I got an email from a friend. "Hey, would you look at this property listing and tell me what you think? It's an old shopping mall on an interstate outside of Kansas City. They had broken it up into seven parcels for sale. Parcel number four is a very long sliver right along the interstate, and it specifically says billboard." And that's all that parcel is for. And that's the only thing you could do with that parcel. We have to be very careful when we go and limit billboards because they are tangible property and it's, you know, physical property, ground, and the ability to make economic value out of that ground. And Idaho historically, from a judicial standpoint, has been, unless you're talking about livestock, has been very much in favor of the property owner's rights over others. And so it's a very fine line, and if we don't want this law challenged down the road, we really need to take into consideration. My recommendation for the billboard issue is conditional use permit. It then, instead of a cap, you put it into a conditional use permit, and then it forces it through a very rigorous process to get a new billboard up or to take one down and replace it somewhere else because of aging or whatever. But there's at least a mechanism, and, and it accomplishes all kinds of compromise. The second thing, dimming is a real challenge. Older signs, especially backlit ones, are, are going to be fluorescent bulb. I know a lot of them are getting upgraded to LED, but they don't necessarily go to the effort taking out ballast. Then you got to get new controllers that control dimmings up and down, all that. It's a real expense. And I can tell you, on my building, I put in $40,000 worth of signage, including a neon sign. And to try to go back on some of those and create dimming is going to be thousands and thousands of dollars. It's just not, it's not as easy as it sounds. And the one candlelight, I don't even think is visible. And, and again, when you're paying for a sign, you're thinking of it for 24/7. That's why we light them. That's why we backlight them, we frontlight them, we whatever light them. And you're taking away a third of our lighting hours if you implement the current ban that is proposed. The last thing I will say is the flagship sign of all of Pocatello is the Chief. The Chief is in fact, 100% the forerunner of digital LED signs. It is illuminated and it is in motion all the time. And it was done to make it so that you can see it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
We have a lot to wrap our head around. I, I guess first, though, we get rebuttal and, wait, I'm assuming there's nobody else. Is there anybody else who would like to speak against it? I'm, I'm like, we're not, no. Anybody else? Okay, sorry. Rebuttal, and I have some questions for you as well.
We don't have any rebuttal.
Okay. Can you answer questions?
Sure.
So a lot's been said. I think there are probably still some things that need to be considered. That doesn't mean we have to table it. It could be things that we address in our, in our motions. Was there discussion during your committee meeting about billboard signs and doing a conditional use permit or going a different way with those?
Um, no, not that I recall. We've talked about cap and replace is, is the main discussion that I recall. that I recall.
Can you, to make sure not all of us were in those, that was the next one of my questions, can you explain cap and replace for us, please?
Yeah, so to the best of my ability, cap and replace basically means that, we'll just say, Pocatello has 100 billboards. And so they are capped at 100, the number. And then going forward, say, one has to come down because a lease on the property expires. So that means they can't have that billboard in that location anymore. But the replace would mean that the company that owns the billboard gets a credit to be able to replace that billboard somewhere else in the future, when, when they have an opportunity to replace it, you know, in the right zone and meeting the right standards.
Okay. Any more thought on the external lighting?
Not right now. You know, I would just say, this is a group process, and it's certainly not something I've come up with on my own.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we've taken notes.
I have not said "you guys" to you.
Yeah. No, I get it. But we'll go back to our team, talk about the concerns, and, and really determine, based on you guys' direction, how we want to work things in into the, you know, the code going forward.
I think my last question is multi-tenant building.
Okay.
That's going to be super, super hard. I'm in a multi-tenant building.
Yes.
And if every, if every single tenant that was in that building had their sign on the front of the sign, I would be directing traffic more than doing my job. I feel like some of them are more clear-cut, as far as, but I, I mean, I just feel like that could, that could hurt multi-tenant buildings. I just, is there conversation on that, thought on that?
There definitely has been conversation on the multi-tenant facilities. And Brent, if you want to pipe in, you're welcome to. You know, what we are trying to achieve in this code is keeping it simple and putting the ownership on the landowners. And so that, that was the idea behind multi-tenants, is that it would be the landlord or the property owner that manages people's sign allotment on the building.
That's a good explanation. So Brent McLean, Planning Director. So that's the advantage of having the master sign plan that we've included in, in the code, that we are encouraging property owners to create this master sign plan. So they take ownership of the signage on their properties, and they present that to the city. We go through the process, get that approved, and then they can just manage the signage on their property based off of that, that master sign plan. Those tenants, now, I have seen buildings that it can get clustered with signage. It can happen. And that's usually because the landlord is just letting tenants do whatever they want to do. Now, the cap, or the, the restriction on the, the square footage of those signs, each elevation can only have so many square feet of signage on that, based off of the zone. And so there is some restriction as to how much signage can actually go on those multi-tenant buildings as well. But in your instance, it's a pre-existing multi-tenant building. We aren't requiring that master sign plan to come forward. We're trying to encourage it by providing some incentives to do that because I think it serves everybody's interest to have that in place. If you can have those signs pre-established in that master sign plan, then if, if a business changes, changes out, they don't have to go and go through the whole permitting process, as long as it maintains within that, that master sign plan. And so there's some advantage to those property owners to do that. But it ultimately is the property owner's responsibility to manage those multi-tenant signs and who gets what. We're not dictating that, you know, this, this tenant gets more than this tenant. That's up to that property owner to figure out. All we're saying is that building gets this much.
Commission, do you have any questions for staff, since I drug them back up here?
For the cap and replace, the city obviously didn't, chose not to go that way. Is there a reason?
Mostly, I've, I've, I struggle with the long-term implication of that. So I talked with the city council about this in a work session. It's, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but the, the real concern I have is, how do we manage and keep track of what's out there? And when a billboard comes down, you can get a demolition permit for that. And then that's something that we will have to track internally of what, what billboard is being replaced and where. And it's been gone for 10 years, 15 years, and I won't be around. I'm going to retire at some point, hopefully. But that, that's my, my dilemma with that cap and replace idea. I think there's some merit to it, but I also think, long-term, it's a difficult thing for us to, to manage as a city.
And then I know we talked about abandoned signs, and there was some concern there. I assume most of that's going to refer to like cabinets and old pole signs that don't have any faces in them. Is that really what we're trying to eliminate, that we're worried about?
Yeah, it's mostly signs in disrepair.
Yeah.
And, and there probably needs to be some clarification in that language. I would, would probably concur with some of the comments that have been made regarding the abandoned sign. There is value in those signs that are on those buildings. And I, I want to make sure it's clear that that's not what we're, we're really concerned about. What we're really concerned about is those signs that are in disrepair, or signs that are up there for a year or two, and it's advertising a business that hasn't been there for two years.
Right. We're just out, if you're, yeah, if you own the building, you're trying to lease it, put a for lease sign in there is what we're asking. Because honestly, they should be covered anyways, or they're going to get ruined by the weather.
Right.
Okay. And then I know somebody brought up about the window signs or permit for it. Why do we feel that's necessary?
I can just say that because of the 20% elevation-
Because you're including that, 20%.
Yeah, it's just included. That's, that's the only reason that there's a permit.
They are a permanent sign in this new code. It is a permanent sign. But-
Right.
-there's restrictions on how much of a window can be covered. And that's based off of safety concerns that we have gotten input, input from our, our police department on. But also, it is included in that 20%. So in that 20%, I don't care how many signs you put up-
Yeah.
-or what kinds of signs they are exactly, but that's what's limiting.
So it's a permit process. Somebody wants to add a window sign. Pretty simple, straightforward?
It's, it's really simple and straightforward. It doesn't take a long time to get.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm good.
Trying to find how to put the words into a cohesive sentence.
Roger.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Signs of disrepair. You noted that the planning director, that you, would be responsible for making the call on those?
Yes.
So that'd just be you. There'd be, would code enforcement also be included in that?
Yeah, so typically, for the sign code, my staff is the code enforcement. And so if we see something, or if something is reported to us, we would go through the, the steps to try to get that removed with the property owner. Typically, there's notifications given to them, and there's timeframes that they are given to remove those signs. And it's, it's something that would then come to me to, to determine if it qualifies under that description.
I think that relates back to my question, actually, is just code enforcement. I know that Pocatello as a whole, not just including signage, has struggled with code enforcement, and that's obvious. I mean, we know that, right? And I also respect that our budget is tight. And are we going to add funding to either enable your department to do more enforcement, hire someone new? Are we going to be able to enforce this adequately? And if the answer is no, why do a code?
So, that's a great question. And that's always a question that we, we talk about in the city. And currently, like I said, my staff, all of the planners, they are assigned different areas that, on a rotating basis, that they are responsible for code complaints. And currently, we mostly do reactionary code enforcement. We're not out there driving the streets looking for code violations.
Sure.
And if, if someone reports something to us, or if someone makes a complaint, then we go out and do that. So, and that's, that's pretty typical for a lot of the city, and lots of cities are that way.
Absolutely.
Sign code enforcement is, is a hard thing, and it's never a fun experience for anybody. Now, if this is something the city council wants to push forward and do more of, we, we can always ask for, for funding for code enforcement officers to do that. We do have code enforcement officers with the city, but they don't address the land use issues.
Right.
They have other things that they're addressing. All land use code enforcement falls on our department. And, and we manage it. It's a lot. And do I wish I had a code enforcement officer? Absolutely. But I also don't like going looking for it either.
What?
Yeah.
Thank you. I know that, I know that was a hard question. It wasn't directed negatively. I just, I think it's a question. Yeah.
I did want to clarify. When I brought up like a pole cover, I know some gentlemen mentioned, oh, I don't want to have to add a pole cover. It's not what we're asking, right? It's just, any new signage, the signs that are there, they're grandfathered in. As long as they're, you know, maintained and they're not disrepair, then there's nothing that's going to be asked of that, except for the dimming. The dimming's the only thing we're asking for, turn off.
Yeah. If that's something that the, the commission wanted to include, it would be something along those lines, where we're not retroactively going, asking people to-
Change what they have now, okay.
-that structure itself.
Just to clarify what, what Adam just mentioned, so dimming would be the only one that would not fall under a grandfather clause of some kind. Okay. So, just to help me understand this, if we approve this, this will, as it's written currently, will go before city council, and this process will basically get repeated with them. They'll hear all of these same opinions. And if we do not approve it, it either dies and it's done, or you guys take it and make revisions and present it again. What's, what happens?
So if you don't approve it, we can do two things. We can take it to council without your recommendation.
So we're pointless.
Or we can make changes and bring it back. Something is going to change because our current code is terrible, and there's a lot of issues with it. It is extremely hard to enforce. It's very hard to interpret. Like, I've been doing this for a long time, and when I got here and read the sign code, I didn't know what it said. And I, that's a problem. And it took a lot of, of time for me to sit down with staff and say, how have you been interpreting this? And it's been based off of historical interpretations. And it's really difficult to, to read through and understand what's happening. So something will happen with the sign code. So if you don't approve it, we will bring it back with whatever changes or modifications you feel like we need to come back with. Because I don't want to go forward to the city council without your blessing on this either.
What is current, because I don't know sign code. What is current sign code in regards to dimming? Or is that just not covered? It was probably written before-
I think, and you know, Jim's the best to answer this.
I think there's a curfew on RCP, but nothing else.
I think it says .3 candle is the expectation.
Yeah.
I don't know that it has to be dimmed at night.
In the RCP zone, it requires the dimming already.
I've been dying to come up here.
We've been missing you.
The only dimming requirements we have is on electronic message centers. Anything, at least as this ordinance was written in 2018, I don't know what was previous to 2018, but as of 2018, all electronic boards must have dimming capabilities. And they have to comply to the .3 foot candle ambient light requirement. But all of them, as of 2018 at least, have to have dimming capabilities.
That's always already provided for in our current-
Yeah.
That's five years ago, six years ago.
Regular internally lit signs don't have any dimming requirements. I would say, though, that's, if they're fluorescents, it's just a regular light, like in your house. You flip it on and off, and it's going to burn out eventually, you know?
2018, so signs before that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what was here before 2018, though.
We could look into the history of dimming pre, pre that, but I only know back to 2018.
I don't know.
Just curious where we're at currently.
Yeah, we'll wait here while you do that. Any other questions? No. Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. So with that, I will declare the public hearing closed. There's a step for tonight. So I think we need to have a conversation before a motion is made. One thing I would like to say, thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it. Appreciate hearing from everybody caring about our community. I would like to say, the next time the city sends, the numbers of the city surveys are always disappointed, they're disappointing. And it's not the city's fault, I don't think. Go follow the city on Facebook. You will not miss a survey. Well, the algorithms. But anyways, please, please, from now on, make sure you're sharing that. Make sure you're telling everybody. It is important that we get way more people of our population taking these surveys. That's where the input is. Some things that I really, really like. I like the site triangle. There wasn't a site triangle before. We know if we're trying to pull out of somewhere and we can't see, you can't see, and that is, I would say, where a pole sign would be warranted, so that it's not blocking sight. I, I think the hard part is, we're never going to make anybody happy with anything that we do. It's just not going to happen. But I do, while there's been huge changes, and I appreciate the, the forming a committee and getting input and, and putting so much work into it, I still feel like, right now, it is, there's still a huge disadvantage to people with existing signs. And I think that's something that definitely needs to be brought up. And, and talked about. I think one thing we need to remember about signs is, we've heard a lot of marketing and advertising, but there's also safety. This afternoon, I was driving, I had somewhere I was going. I couldn't see their small sign on the ground, but I could see the next place's big sign. And so I'm looking at the big sign, probably not, I wasn't texting or looking at my phone, probably not, you know what I mean, a little bit of distraction there. Signs are just as good for that, to get us places. Even though it's not a stop sign, or a yield sign, or a merge sign, they're still directional in some sort of a way. I hate to deter new, new businesses. I also don't want a billboard in my backyard. I've come here and sat on that site and said the new development behind me needs to make sure they're not shining their porch lights in my backyard. Thoughts?
Come on, don't be scared, guys.
A lot of good points from both sides. I, like a lot of people have talked about, also appreciate the natural beauty where we live, and I want to ensure that we have some form of regulated growth to protect that. I don't know if you guys have driven through, and I apologize if any of you are from Stockton, California, or Roy, Utah. But that's what I think of when I think of just unregulated growth. And so I appreciate what this is, to protect that. I had no idea until Brett mentioned it, that the current code is not good. And I just have to take your word on it. But I, I trust you, and so I would love to see something to fix bad code. And we heard from a few bitter, excuse me, we heard from a few business owners who this will positively impact their ability to create signs for their place of business. And so I like it for all of those reasons. I have four issues that bothered me, but they also were repeated several times. The first one was in regards to abandoned real estate signage, and what was, who shouldered the cost there. The second one was some clarity in regards to off-premise signs. The third one was dimming and curfew. There's, that's a whole can of worms, and grandfathered, or, or what we do with that. And then finally, the cap system. I appreciated the- I appreciated the, the gentleman who suggested a conditional use permit. I think that's the most sensible thing. But to say that we're going to cap Pocatello to 100 billboards, or whatever that number might be, I don't think that provides for our future. And so, I don't know, that's where I'm at. I think that the, like everyone has said, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, but I think it still needs work.
Thank you for coming. I, I think this is exciting. It's nice to see civic engagement, and it's incredible to see how many people gather in a room with opposing views and still respect the same thing, which is our quality of life, which includes putting food on the table and sitting in your kitchen and enjoying a cup of coffee in the morning. I can respect both sides of that. And thank you for being respectful to us. I haven't seen my family since yesterday. Left work at 6:00 AM and I haven't been home yet, and we are volunteers, we're not paid. So we're here because we too love the community, and I just want to say that. I had a couple of areas that I was a little concerned, and I think it kind of echoes the group's concerns. I am worried about the economic impact this will have on current owners of signs, and I don't take that lightly. I understand that you followed the rules and regulations as they were. You did the right thing, and you followed the rules, and then things change, and now it's your burden to bear financially, and that's hard to swallow. I also respect that regulations are here to protect our community. I work in Idaho Falls, and every day I get to drive home to this beautiful valley, and I genuinely, genuinely appreciate it. And I will never move to Idaho Falls because it is so beautiful to come home to these I worry that in our code, there are a few areas that the definitions need to be honed in a little bit, defined a little bit more clearly. I can appreciate that we want to have a broad code so that there is area to work with people. I don't want to open us up to risk because we didn't define things clear enough. And I appreciate Mr. Lyle's comment about conditional use permitting as well. I thought that was fantastic and innovative, and thank you for bringing that input. So I have no answers. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, it's kind of, I feel like, for, although, I know all the work that's gone in, and I was part of the committee that met and kind of went over this stuff. And I think we're just so close, and I know we're trying to keep it simple, but sometimes when it's too simple, there's a lot, leaves a lot of questions. And a lot of stuff needs to be, some of this, not a lot of stuff, some stuff needs to be clarified. So when somebody does look at it, they, there's, they don't have to call you and ask a question, which I think it's very, very close. I think we're almost there. We just have the lighting. I can understand the viewpoint from both sides. I don't want something lighting up in my backyard, but I understand the business and the people that have paid for these billboards and are running these billboards. And, and then as far as the billboard, not allowing any more, I understand that. Cap and replace sounds like a good solution, or a conditional use permit. I know you guys have probably gone back and forth with the billboard companies a thousand times on this, and this is where we're at, but I don't, I don't know where we go. I'm not sure how we go on this. I mean.
Hello.
Return Roger.
But I agree with, with the commission here, actually. And I think that I personally, I have a sign that lights up my house 24/7. So I mean, I understand certainly the, the people that are for the code right now, but I also agree that I think it's a little too wide. We need to narrow some things down. I wonder if we can't just do what we did last time and table it again for another session.
Um, I don't, I don't think. I don't think we can because we closed the public hearing. I think we need to have a motion. Please share your thoughts.
No, I think you were going to say, go ahead.
I think why we have the ability to make a motion and say, with this condition, this condition, this one, there's too many, and we are not the experts to be doing that. I almost feel like we went from one extreme to the other extreme with this, which I hate to say, sorry, you guys. But I just, like, I don't, I don't, it's been great work. I think there's a little bit more great work that needs to happen to get it where we fine-tune it.
Yeah, and we need to get it done sooner than later, is the point.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't want to lose momentum. I don't think anyone wants to continue to waste time or our tax dollars.
Or wait months till this next meeting.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not the point. We want to get things done. But I would rather get them done right now than wait and amend and amend and amend. And it's just, that seems like a worse situation to be in, rather than trying to just get something as perfect as possible at first now. So if you guys, if the city could just make it perfect tonight, that'd be great.
As long as you guys all wait for us, we will do that.
Okay, great. Treats. Yeah, we just want treats.
So do we want to, and it sounds like we don't want to do this, but I think our two options, based on what we've talked about, is either make an approval with conditions or to deny it.
But recommend it, still go to the city council so they can sort it out.
He said he wants to bring, Brett said he wants to bring it back to us, so.
I would rather, if you have a lot of things that you want us to change, I would rather you tell me what you want so I can change it accordingly, rather than just leave it super open-ended.
Yeah.
Without direction.
Can we deny it with conditions?
What I'd do is deny it.
Yeah.
With recommendations to bring it back.
I'm, okay.
That's an option.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I was going to say, I'm gonna.
And, and I'm fine with that, you're not hurting my feelings.
We didn't bring our feelings.
I don't have feelings. But that's, that's what I would need from you, is go ahead and deny it, that's fine, but give me direction as to why and what we need to look at specifically. So when we bring it back, we don't do this again.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to be done.
Yeah, yeah, it needs to wrap up.
Okay.
And, and let's, let's.
A motion?
And what?
A motion, I'll say it after.
Can we do a working session? I know you guys want to be here more, obviously.
You guys.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Okay.
We're here for it.
I move to deny the preliminary plat application from Pocatello Hawthorne. Oh, nope, that's the wrong one.
It's all right.
That one's already passed.
Thank you.
That one too, never mind.
I move to recommend denial of the repeal of Title 1520 sign code and the proposed amendments to Title 17 zoning regulations. Finding the amendments are not in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the criteria listed in Section 17.02.170 of Pocatello City Code. Finding that the code still needs work in the.
You don't need to be specific.
Okay, well, I, I'm going to try to be specific.
So slow.
In regards to abandoned real estate, off-premise signs, dimming and curfew, and a cap system. Does anyone have anything they want to add to that?
I'd like to add enforcement. Terms of enforcement.
As well as terms of enforcement?
Kind of.
And rules regarding grandfathering.
Thank you.
And banners as permanent signs?
Just terrifying.
That was a joke, right? And to author, Aislinn, you get all that?
I'm going to repeat this and you're going to.
Oh, boy.
Some points. Okay, I'm going to skip all of the blah blahs. Finding code needs work in regards to abandoned signs. What was the next you said?
Off-premise.
Off-premise signs.
Off-premise signs? Abandoned off-premise signs?
No, those are two different, abandoned real estate, signs for abandoned real estate was the first one. Correct, for number two.
Okay, dimming signs?
Dimming and curfew, for number three.
Cap system conditions.
Correct.
Terms of enforcement and rules regarding grandfathering.
Correct. Good. And authorize the chair to sign the findings back.
Kate?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Phillips and a second by Guyer. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Phillips?
Yes.
Guyer?
Yes.
Chamba?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Before you guys go, thank you for coming here and speaking your mind.
Yes.
I encourage you, just because there's not a survey out there. Their emails, those guys' emails are on the city's website. Please send them productive emails, things like, here's what I've seen in other cities that really work well. This is, don't send them, I hate this, send them, here's a solution. That will help a lot, okay? Thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned. 8:50.
Now.